Well, I've got straight up noon. So I'll go ahead and call us to order. Um, Nicole, let's do a roll call to determine if we have a call.
Yes, sir. Al Brodel?
Present.
Kevin Anderson?
Here.
Lori Griffin? I believe Lori's on. She must be muted. Grayson Bigger? Alan Bone? Jim Carr?
Present.
Jerry Cash?
Present.
Chad Hooton? Andy McNeil? Kyle Miller? Greg Rebels? Michael Stanton?
Present.
We have six present. We need one more for quorum, and I do believe we'll have that one joined shortly.
We did get. Oh, there's Grayson.
We do have seven out of 12. We have a quorum.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. If there are any other participants, uh, do you want to go ahead and take a chance to identify yourself right now?
This is Don Bobbitt at the University of Arkansas System. I have Michael Moore with me and Melissa Rust.
Well.
And Dr. Houston Davis at the University of Central Arkansas, and I've got Dr. Sharice Jones Branch, who's here as an A fellow with me. We're just tuning in.
Thank you. Uh, I just remind everybody, if you have any questions or comments, that you please identify yourself before you ask the question or before you make a comment in order for us to know who we are speaking to. Uh, we have a fairly full agenda. I think we have nine items on the agenda. And so we will jump right into, uh, uh, action item, agenda item number one, policy amendment to the Arkansas Academic Scholarship Challenge Scholarship. Dr. Markham will provide the background for this item. Dr. Markham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you for calling this meeting in such a timely fashion. I appreciate all the board members making time in their schedules to hear these items off schedule. We do have nine items for the agenda. The first eight are all policy updates and amendments. Six of the eight are as a result of acts that passed in this previous session that required some substantial changes to um, some of our administrative rules. That first one, as you mentioned, um, is the policy update for the academic challenge scholarship. We had multiple acts that passed in the, in the previous session that impacted that, Act 636, Acts 80 and 81. Um, all of these policy amendments were provided in your full board manual at the last board meeting, so there are no changes since, since you saw that, if you haven't had a chance to review those again. Uh, there are no known opposing groups to any of these rule changes. Uh, this one in particular has no anticipated fiscal impact. There were some changes to language that removed definitions that were no longer found anywhere in statute. Uh, we clarified some eligibility requirements. Um, we also removed some language regarding approved leaves of absence because that language was found elsewhere um, in both the policy and the code. Uh, we removed all of the language regarding literacy tutoring. This was a, um, an option that students had that they had never exercised, so we had no, no students who had ever taken advantage of that program, so we deleted it. Um, and then also some clarifying and revised language around scholarship amounts. Um, as a result of transformation, we had to do some find and replace for all of these policies to change department to division of higher education. So those are the changes related to the Arkansas Academic Challenge Scholarship rules. And I'm happy to take any questions from the board, or I can roll right through these, whatever you would like for me to do, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any questions from the board?
Yes, uh, Mr. Brodel, I'd like to ask Dr. Markham a question. And looking over this, and looking over this document pretty carefully, these changes are pretty much technical changes. There's one, uh, grade point average score. We use the super scores now for the ACT rather than just a score. I mean, I didn't see any major changes. Am I correct about that?
That's correct, and that's why we don't feel like this, it's not a controversial change. There's really no opposition. It was just aligning what was in the rules to what was in, um, the amended statutes.
Dr. Markham, this is Al. Um, if you would, just remind me, all of these were in the full board meeting previously. We pulled them from the agenda to make sure they had gone through the proper process, which had changed for this year. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Mr. Chair, um, this is the first year that we've been asked to have the Secretary of Education review those prior to the board. Usually it's the other way around. So we just had to, uh, make some changes in that process. And I, I did want to remind the board, so this is the, this is the way we initiate these rule changes. The secretary has approved them. Uh, we asked the board for their initial approval, and then they go out for a 30-day public comment. So, um, we will have an opportunity for the public to weigh in on any of the requested changes. And then, of course, if we see anything that we may have missed in the process, we may have changes. It will come back to this board for final adoption before the legislature sees it. So we have, um, you know, several steps in the process, and really this is the first step that the board, um, is involved with.
Dr. Markham, Jerry Cash?
Yes, sir.
The, um, this is just really an information item, but in remediation, our developmental courses. Are they counted as a part of the challenge scholarship program?
Yes.
Do they count in the first 27 hours for that year?
They do not count because they're not credit bearing. Um, I have Alicia Lewis on the line, too, who can talk a little more deeply about that. Students are required to complete all remediation in the first 30 hours. But they remedial courses are paid for by the scholarship.
They do pay for them.
Yeah.
And, and if, if they only, if they take six hours of remediation and they only complete, say, 24 for that semester, does that disqualify them for the, for the following semester?
If they only take 24 credit bearing hours plus six remedial classes, then no, they're qualified. They're still qualified. Yes, those hours count toward their 30 credit hour requirement for the first year.
Okay, so i- it's not a hindrance to them then to take remedial courses?
Not at all, and we, the policy specifies that we want you to take those courses and complete those courses in your first year. So we encourage students to take any remediation that's required in the first year, and it is paid for by the scholarship.
One additional question regarding concurrent credit.
Yes.
Many of the students, and we also have a scholarship for those concurrent students now. Many of them are going to complete 25 and 30 hours.
Yes.
Is that going to put them into the second semester of eligibility, or does it keep them in the first one?
It can. So, um, we have a threshold for concurrent credit that students, if they come to us and they have, I believe it's more than 27 credit hours? Or they have to have 30?
That's correct.
Then they can opt in to receive that sophomore year award their first full year, that they're a true freshman, but they're, they're coming in for the first time as a matriculated student. So they can opt in to that higher award, but they, it's an affirmative opt-in. So unless they opt in, they receive the $1,000 freshman level award.
So they would enter the second, a year with the $4,000?
Yes, that's correct.
Good, good. And, and one, one additional question. I noticed we had, uh, a cutoff of 130 hours. What do you do with those degrees that require more than 130 hours?
If they require more than 130 hours?
Yeah, it will do anymore.
Right. So Alicia, can you speak to that for students whose degree programs require additional time?
Sure. We, we only pay, um, standard hours up to 120 for most bachelor's degrees. Once they reach 120 hours is when their funding is, um, no longer valid. For some programs that, I mean, such as an architecture program that's specific to the University of Arkansas at Fayetteville, that degree program is 130 hours. And if that has been, um, notified, if, if the institution has notified of that, has notified us of that, um, particular degree program, we will pay the, the 130 hours. But there's no degree programs that we have on our books that we pay over 130 hours.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
If I may, um, Dr. Markham, another question, pardon Mr. Cash's question whenever he was, um, speaking to the forfeit of the freshman award amount. Students who do not take advantage of, um, the freshman award amount or those concurrent hours towards bumping up their, um, their award amount their sophomore year, they can use the, they can use it on the backside of their degree program, that $2,500 a semester award that they're getting their senior year towards graduate school if they have reached 120 hours.
Okay, that's good.
Any other questions from the board?
Al, I've got a, I've got a quick one. It's kind of more of a technical nature. But I'm on page 13, uh, kind of in the middle. It's, uh, subsection D1A. Uh, I, I think there's been some strike through and, and, uh, an addition, and the addition is subject to the availability of net revenue. So just a suggestion, I'm, I'm wondering, I didn't see it in the definitions. Uh, I, I'm wondering what our definition of net revenue is and, and whether we should not spell that out in the definition section of this.
So, uh, to answer that question, um, Mr. Anderson, I believe that that definition is actually in the lottery statute. So it's referred to in another piece of code where net revenue is defined. So it's not our net revenue. This is net revenue received by the lottery for a given year.
Okay, and, and would it be beneficial to include that in our definitions sections of this? You know, and the other part is we're defining different terms. Would it be good to define that?
I'm going to make a note of that. I believe that our legal counsel, Whitney James, is on the call, and we will review that and see if, if there's a need to define net revenue in this, in this rule, or if it's taken care of somewhere else, and we just need to reference it.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions from the board? Do I hear a motion to approve the Arkademy, Arkansas Academic Challenge Scholarship Policy Amendment?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, action item, agenda item number two, policy amendment for the Arkansas Future Grant Scholarship. Dr. Markham?
Okay, this, um, this amendment, there were actually two acts that necessitated amendment here. One was actually passed in 2019, but the rules never reached ALC. Um, so we had some draft rules out there since 2019 that are incorporated also into the amended language um, that was required for Act 388. So the impact of, of this is it allows private nonprofit two and four-year universities and colleges to participate and offer this opportunity to their students. Um, prior, it had only been public institutions. And I will point out that it also caps the award amount at the same level as we pay for the public institutions. So instead of being last dollar at those private entities, it caps that at what would be charged to the student at a public entity. So there's no, no, no opposition to this as well, and no anticipated fiscal impact because the award amount is the same regardless of where a student chooses to attend.
I move it to be accepted as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you.
Or?
Agenda item number three, uh, policy amendment for the Arkansas Governor's Scholars Program. Dr. Markham?
Thank you. So the Governor's Scholars Program, uh, was amended by three separate acts, uh, 217, 331, 79, and 743. Uh, there is no known opposition to the changes here. Um, all of the changes that we made were in direct response to the acts that were passed. Uh, we won't have a fiscal impact for this academic year, but we have conservatively estimated a $600,000 increase to the scholarship for each year for the next four years until, uh, you know, all cohorts, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors are all in the pipeline. There was some additional language that expanded eligibility to populations of students who were previously not eligible for several reasons. Um, there was an additional language requiring applicants to complete the FAFSA. And that was because we added that for all of our scholarship programs. So previously, you only had to apply for the FAFSA if you were receiving a, a few of our scholarships. Now, if you're going to apply for a scholarship from the state of Arkansas, you have to have first completed the FAFSA. So it's uniform across all programs. Um, we did remove some language regarding the high school end of course assessment, and that was necessary because we no longer have high school end of course assessments in the state of Arkansas. And a substantive change to this program that will, uh, is driving that increased fiscal impact is we will now be accepting super scores for the Governor's Distinguished Scholar Program instead of the composite score. So we do anticipate a significant increase in students who are eligible. And then some technical corrections for the agency's name as a result of transformation. I'm happy to answer questions about this one.
Uh, Dr. Markham, Jerry Cash again. Could you give me a little more of a definition of what permanent resident alien is? Uh, you've got some of it here, but is there more involved?
Uh, no, this is all, if you look under the eligibility criteria, um, the ones that were changed, that is all that is there. Um, let's see, you are, are you looking on page four?
I am, I am.
Okay. So the permanent resident alien was already there, so that was already an eligibility criteria. Um, what we extended that, so they had to be a lawful resident of the state. That was already there. Um, people who are not residents of the state now can apply if they hold this federal form I766. Uh, this is not DACA. These are actually students who are here. Um, many of them, their parents are here on one of these enhanced visas that allows them to enter the country because they have a specialized skill set. We have a lot of, um, for instance, faculty members at some of our universities who are here, um, you know, teaching chemistry or some of these, um, programs that it's very hard to recruit qualified faculty for. So they have been in the country, um, teaching for us. They've worked for some of our very high-tech industries. So now those individuals who are here under that specific type of work visa, uh, now can qualify for this scholarship. Their, their dependents can. And then the other qualifying, um, category that can now get the Governor's Distinguished are those here from the Compact of Free Association Islands, and that's the Marshallese group of students who are in the northwest, um, area of the state. So neither of those categories are permanent resident aliens, so that is why we, that's what got added.
If, if a parent is a green card holder, are their, are their kids eligible?
Not necessarily. So it, it has to be that specific type of visa. A green card in and of itself is not enough.
Okay, thank you.
An increase are we expecting of the number of students who would qualify because we're going to a super score?
Yes, we, we did, um, you know, we may have a couple of students a year. We've already seen a few that applied this year that qualified under the visa or the work permit. Exception here, uh, but we-
Just a few, just a few then?
Yeah, there were just a few. We didn't have any under the, uh, of the Marshallese students who qualified. We had a few of the students who, like I said, their parents are here under that heightened, uh, work permit. But we did run some projections on how many students would have qualified this year with a super score versus a composite, and we've tried to extrapolate that out over the next few years. Um, so we, we did get an appropriation and a funding increase to take care of this first couple of years so that we could implement this. Hopefully that, that money will keep flowing so that we can honor this, uh, obligation.
Thank you.
Actually, this is Kevin Anderson. I would just follow up to a couple of the questions that have already been asked. As far as the, I, I realize we've expanded eligibility, super score being, uh, one of those items is, um, I guess my question is, do we know, is the, isn't there a cap on the number of people that can receive the scholarship?
There was initially, the enabling language that we initially had, it gave a minimum number. So we had to fund at least that number of students, but it wasn't a cap the way the language is. It's as, as long as funds are available, we have to fund it. So I believe initially it was 275 students that we had to guarantee, but to this, we're, we're funding, um, close to 1,000 students a year. So we're getting really, we have not had to cap that. We've been able to shift revenue from other scholarships that didn't spend all their funds, tap into our fund balances. You know, this is the group of students we really want to retain in the state of Arkansas. So, so far, we've been able to fund all eligible students.
Okay, so it was a floor, not a cap, so I had it remembered incorrectly. Okay, good.
The only cap is revenue available.
Gotcha. And, um, in terms of the, uh, federal form I766, um, citizenship and immigration, uh, addition. So this is a scholarship that you, there are certain eligibility requirement. I mean, you have to not requalify, but there's certain standards you have to meet each year to continue to receive the scholarship. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So my question is, uh, what if I qualify for the scholarship under, under the Fed Form I776? And for whatever reason, uh, I assume it's an apparent in most situations, that is revoked or expires during the four or five years that I'm in college receiving the scholarship? What happens?
Um, I'm going to have to ask Alicia for that technical question as far as recertification of that status, what that process is.
We do not, we currently don't have a mechanism to follow back up on the, on the status of that, um, the immigration status. But most of those, um, immigration statuses that are given for the Titan, uh, work visa are for longer than the duration of the scholarship. They are most often granted for, like, 10 years or more.
But it is possible, it's possible that a student might be deemed eligible at the onset, and then their parents leave the country or no longer be covered. Um, so that, that is a possibility.
And, and so you're, you're coming to my ultimate point here is, what, did the legislature, uh, address that during the process or when this was passed?
That was not reflected in the act.
Okay. Uh, again, just something for, I don't know if we can do this in rules or reg, and we're clearly defined it, or whether that might conflict with the spirit or, or or lack of speaking to it, but it might be something that want to be addressed that we get to find one way or the other. Uh, so people kind of know where they stand because it kind of seems like a gray area.
That's an excellent point, and we'll make a note of that to see if there is a, um, something that we could, and we can add, um, you know, qualifying information in the rules as long as it doesn't conflict. So we are, we're not prevented from, um, uh, following up with those students on an annual basis to show that they still meet that continuing eligibility. So that is a note that we will make for inclusion in these rules. And, and again, you'll see these again, um, in a couple of months. So, uh, we'll make sure that we point out how we address that.
And the legislature, remember, they, they, they have a chance to review this, or, uh, ALC or Legislative Council has a chance to review this again, right?
There's a final, um, the final review before this has the effect of law. So yes, I will see it.
Okay, okay, great. So, and then the, the other, um, observation or question, I guess, that I have, and you mentioned it, uh, in the introduction to this, is we're now requiring, uh, the FAFSA. Uh, so my, I guess my question is, is, uh, is why? I mean, I mean, you mentioned uniformity. Everything should be the same. But if need, I'm assuming need is not considered in the decision-making process, why are we requiring FAFSA? And, and was this in the legislation, or is this something we're proposing in rules, the rule side?
Now, this was the result of one of the acts that I've listed, and, and don't ask me to tell you which one did that. But, uh, we had an act that was specific to that that required, uh, FAFSA completion for all students. Um, and there's a lot of reasons for that. Um, one of the, the biggest reasons that we have found is we have students who think that they don't qualify for federal financial aid, so they don't apply. And they end up leaving a lot of scholarship dollars, um, off the table or on the table that they could have taken advantage of. Um, so we're just trying to encourage the students to, um, complete the FAFSA so that they can take advantage of all of the opportunities that, that may be out there. And it also, it helps us to stretch our state dollars further when students have access to all of their resources.
And if I remember right, it's the parents that ultimately, for a traditional student coming out of high school, it's typically the parents that are filling this FAFSA, or that's what a lot of information is based on, not the student themselves. Is that correct?
The parent's income that determines the student's eligibility. Yes.
Good.
We have any other questions from the board? Do I hear a motion to approve the Arkansas Governor's Scholars Pro, Program Policy Amendment?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I think I heard it, Lori. Uh, all those in favor signify by, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Agenda item number four, policy amendment for the Arkansas Workforce Challenge Program. Dr. Markham?
Thank you so much, and this truly is just a technical correction. Um, we, uh, had to rename Division of Higher Education throughout, and then also renumber, um, a reference to the code that changed in another, uh, section of, of the code. So there is no fiscal impact, no, no, no opposition, and no substantive change to this. It is simply technical corrections. But I'm happy to-
I make a motion to be accepted.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Agenda item number five, uh, policy amendment for the Arkansas Concurrent Challenge Scholarship Program. Dr. Markham?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this one is pretty simple as well. Uh, we did have Act 82 that required an amendment here. Um, and it's simply, if you look on page three, the only substantive part is we changed the continuing eligibility criteria from a letter grade to a GPA. And that is to align continuing eligibility with the traditional academic challenge scholarship. So what had happened is if we kept with the C grade for every class, students have the, uh, opportunity for their GPA, their college GPA, to fall below that 2.5, which would have made them ineligible to receive academic challenge when they matriculated to college. So we're setting those students up for success. We're being consistent, making sure that it's that 2.5 that we really want, not just a C letter grade in their, their concurrent classes. So that was the substantive change. Everything else there is technical corrections. Uh, and there's no fiscal impact projected there. So I'm happy to take questions about this one.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the Arkansas Concurrent- Do I hear a motion to approve the Arkansas Concurrent Challenge Scholarship Program Policy Amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Agenda item number six, policy amendment, Law Enforcement Officers Dependence Scholarship Program. Dr. Mark.
Hey, this is one of the few policy amendments that, that we are proposing that was a result of constituent requests, not of changes in the law. So the changes that we made do not conflict with the law. We had some language in the previous policy that was a little more restrictive than the law actually required. And the requests from the constituents were that the employee, as long as they were employed by one of these Arkansas law enforcement entities, and there are several listed there, starting on page two. So, you know, state highway, state municipal, police officers, sheriffs, constables. They wanted it specified that they had to have worked for the Arkansas entity and that we don't consider their, their physical address as their residency requirement. So we have a lot of firefighters, for instance, who live in Texarkana, Texas, but they have worked for 30 years for the Texarkana Arkansas Fire Department. They wanted to be able to take advantage of this benefit. So when we reviewed the law, the law did not say they had to reside in Arkansas. That was something for some reason, when the, when the rules were developed initially was inserted. So we are expanding eligibility for those law enforcement officers who have worked in Arkansas, but they might live in Memphis or, you know, Poplar Bluff or Texarkana, Texas. So that is what we've done there. There's no anticipated fiscal impact. We don't have any known opposition. There are a couple of other technical corrections for agency name, but that is the substance of those changes.
Do I hear any questions?
So, so Dr. Mark, this is Kevin Anderson. So my, I'm not disagreeing, but my suggestion is obviously we can get it through rules and regs. I'd sure be good if this were codified and in legislation, you guys can push for that in the next session. So.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. It's a great point. Any, any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the Law Enforcement Officers Dependence Scholarship Program Policy Amendment?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Agenda item number seven, policy amendment for the Military Dependence Scholarship Program. Dr. Mark.
Thank you very much. This, this scholarship program, we needed an amendment as a result of Act 988. Much like the Arkansas Future Program, we can now allow students who are attending private nonprofit institutions to claim their benefit there as well. It also, like Arkansas Future, caps the award amount as at what the max would be paid at a public institution. So it expands eligibility for those students who choose to receive education at a private nonprofit. We don't anticipate a fiscal impact again because same population of students, they just have greater flexibility in where they can use their benefit.
Are there any questions for Dr. Mark? Do I hear a motion to approve the Military Dependence Scholarship Program Policy Amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Agenda item number eight.
Okay, this is the other policy amendment that we have requested. This is not as a constituent request, but something that ADHE has requested. This is a program we have not ever been able to fund and this coming year is the first time we will be able to launch this program. So it's been on the books for many years, but because we now have adequate funds to start making awards, we had to review those rules. And a lot of dates needed to be dropped out because, you know, they were 10 years ago. We amended the application process to include some information like the year that the students graduated and require them to use our online application. We didn't have an online application when the initial rules were drafted. We added that students could have graduated from an Arkansas public, private homeschool or GED program. So in the past, it didn't specify that. We wanted to be sure that we were always serving Arkansas students in the out of state medical loan program. We amended the application process, again, to be required online rather than mailed. And we also specified that we would make awards on a first come, first served basis as long as we had funds. The previous language required us to rank students based on some merit. And that is not something that we are equipped to do here at the agency, especially because many of these veterinary medical education programs have different processes for ranking students based on merit. So this would be first come, first served for all eligible applicants. We won't have a fiscal impact until 2023. I would point out that once we do have fiscal impact, this is not a general revenue scholarship. We have a special revenue stream that is in place to fund this. So it does not come out of our general scholarship and grants budget. But I'm happy to answer questions about the veterinary medical education loan repayment program.
Dr. Mark and Jerry Cash. The program that had been available for students entering veterinary programs, going to LSU and going to Oklahoma State and other places, is that still open?
That's a separate program that is a, it's actually a scholarship. So those are students who we pay their out of state portion of their tuition every year. This, this is only for Mississippi State veterinary graduates. So they have to have graduated from Mississippi State in this veterinary program and return to Arkansas to practice. And then it's basically we, we are repaying portions of their student loan on the back end.
Okay, good.
Our program will still be operational.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dr. Mark? Do I hear a motion to approve the Out of State Veterinary Medicine Education Loan Repayment Program Policy Amendment?
I make a motion, we approve it.
About a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Agenda item number nine, also Dr. Mark.
Okay, well, I'll be very brief and just introduce this and then turn it over to our colleagues via a system. But we are asking the board to recognize a new organizational unit of the University of Arkansas System that is resulting from a planned acquisition. You have the background information before you. I would point out that there is no state funding attached to this request. This will be a non-formula entity, much like the others that you, you've seen in the past. So it won't be part of the productivity model. There's no state funding at this point that's attached to that. And our recognition of this online campus is necessary for the acquired institution to have continuity of services, operations, accreditation and financial aid services for their students. So that's a little bit of background. You have some information in your packets. But I believe Dr. Bobbitt, President of University of Arkansas System, is going to give you a more thorough explanation of this acquisition and why this approval is necessary. Dr. Bobbitt.
Thank you very much, Dr. Markham. And I want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to present this to you for your consideration. I, I will give you a very quick overview of it and then will be more than willing to answer questions I have with me. Dr. Michael Moore, who has been instrumental in assisting us in, in making this, this deal come through. Now, this actually is a conversation that began five or so years ago when the University of Arkansas System, thanks to your approval, created an online university whose specific purpose was to meet the needs of adult learners, most of whom who have had some college had stopped out, not dropped out, not been forced to leave, but had stopped out because of life, job, their personal situation got in the way. These individuals are now working adults with other constraints, for example, families and their job. And so our traditional institutions with two semesters, perhaps three per year, 15 hours per semester of multiple classes is simply impossible for these individuals. And so to take advantage of the more than 300,000, perhaps as many as 400,000 Arkansans that meet this criteria, that is some college and no college credential. We created an online university with a limited subset of degrees. And it has been very successful in helping those individuals both achieve the educational goals that they have, but also to improve their personal financial situation by upgrades to their employment. One of the things that we have been very impressed with is that this group of students that have been served by this university have been almost identically a coincidence with the proposal that we delivered to you over five years ago. That is that they are adults, they're not in the 18 to 22 year old ballpark. Average age is about 37, heavily weighted toward minorities and, and women. And one can see that, that as being a reason when the operations of a family, the constraints of a family usually fall upon women and others in minority communities to deal with. So we think it has been successful. We have about 700 students in it right now, the vast majority of which are Arkansans. The vast majority of those that have graduated have been Arkansans. And we see and have been seeing consolidations in the online operations across the United States and have been a little bit frustrated by the fact that we could not grow our operation to take advantage of the wonderful academic programs that have been developed. And so about two years ago, a little bit less than two years ago, we began conversations with a university headquartered in Lenexa, Kansas. Its title was Grantham University, not particularly well known, although it has 4,000 students. But it is very well known in the military. In fact, they have a number of senior ex-military officers on their governing board who have helped them. And they have developed a slew of about 60 accredited programs that run the gamut from undergraduate to, to master's degrees. And as I mentioned, they have a very similar philosophical bent as university. That is, they go after the adult learner. And like us, they have multiple semesters per year. If you take a look at what has happened in higher education across the United States, you will see that some of these deals have occurred very recently and have gotten a lot of press. For example, Purdue University formed a completely independent operation that only shares the name Purdue with the home campus in which they acquired the academic assets of Kaplan University, but not the back office operations. That requires a revenue share arrangement between the two entities. Kaplan is responsible for many of the back office operations, as I mentioned, which includes recruitment and marketing. And Purdue isn't, is Purdue Global, rather, is now responsible for the academic operations of the university. Right from the beginning, if we had to accept an arrangement like that, we were prepared to do so, but it is not ideal. What is ideal is that we control the entire flow of the student experience from marketing to acquisition to enrollment to graduation. And all of these deals, whether you're talking about Arizona Zovio, you're talking about Purdue Kaplan, or you're talking about others, there's a separation between those two entities that requires sometimes as long as a 25 or 30 year agreement between the two for this to continue. This deal is different. After many months of discussion, we both parties came to realize that the ideal situation for Arkansas, the ideal situation for this university, continue to serve the students that it did would be for one entity to control the entire student flow. And so what you have before you is an entire university moving into or merging into the University of Arkansas System. The U of A will acquire substantially all of the assets. That includes the accredited degree programs, the catalog, the software used to both recruit and assist students in their academic advising and persistence, as well as a number of other leases that have to do with the technology that we use to support the online students. There are a few leases that are not germane to the operation, that are not going to be part of the deal. You may have seen in the newspaper account that we are going to acquire all but, most, but not all of the assets. And really, there are some things that just don't make business sense for us that we have agreed not to accept. So in this university, what we find is a philosophical alignment with the standards that we hold in the University of Arkansas System, and I believe the coordinating board holds. And that is the student is the center of everything that we do. And so our goal is to maintain the very wonderful and exceptional persistence and graduation rates that, that we have experienced with university. Grantham has very similar persistence and graduation rates. And we think that merging this into the U of A system as a not for profit with the University of Arkansas's name and the assistance of all the assets that we bring to bear from, from being a, an academic system of some reputation means that we can grow this institution, particularly in the middle part of the country where there seems to be a void of this type of entity specifically devoted toward the needs of the adult learner. So that is an overview of it. The financial constraints are fantastic, really, from the University of Arkansas's point of view. After many discussions, it became apparent that, that really what we needed to do was merge this into the U of A system and not list this as a sale. And for, for business purposes, it'll be listed as a dollar. But this really is an example of an individual and a governing board that sees this mission as being critically important to the students they serve. And they're entrusting the University of Arkansas with the continuation of this wonderful entity. And we pledge to do everything that we can to continue to meet the needs of the students that, that for the most part don't have many options at this point in their life. I, I will leave, this is a very high overview. I'd be glad to talk and Michael would be glad to talk about any specific questions you might have. But we're very excited by this. Our board voted on this. And the governing board of Grantham University voted on this successfully a little bit more than a week ago.
One question, Jerry Cash. Will the degree be earned from the U of A or will it still be Grantham University?
So the, the practice in the industry when this happens is at a point of when the deal closes, and this is true with the universities that Dr. Bobbitt mentioned, there's just a hard break. So at that point, a student graduating after the anticipated close date in early October, those students would receive a degree from the University of Arkansas Grantham. The transcripts would reflect that. People that had degrees and transcripts before that would receive their Grantham transcripts.
Okay.
Jim Carr here. Dr. Moore, I like those blue socks.
Thank you.
Question, has Grantham ever done much marketing outside of the military? Have they marketed to other groups or it's been primarily military?
It's a great question. They have about two thirds of their enrollment come from the legacy that Dr. Bobbitt was mentioning in the military. It goes really back to the, the history of the name of the individual who created the institution, which is a World War II veteran and the early focus on telecommunications degrees and so forth. But they truly do have a national marketing presence. I believe in the materials that we share with you, there's a map on one of the pages of the proposal that sort of shows you where they're scattered, their enrollments are scattered. There's a fair amount in the southeast which would coincide with a lot of military bases. But there, I've been up to visit a few times and the, the marketing operation is, is, is 100% digital like you would expect for an online university. They target all populations. The success of the military is largely a legacy of having built a good brand reputation and sort of word of mouth carrying that forward. So it's not 100% dependent upon the military. It's a good source. We expect that to continue and complement the, the efforts. They only have about 2% in the state of Arkansas.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there any other questions on Agenda Item Number Nine? Hearing no other questions, do I hear a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Nine?
The Price is Right, I make the motion, we approve it.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of our agenda items. Before we adjourn, are there any announcements, any, any new business to come before the board?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to ask Dr. Mark one question before we leave. Colleges and universities in the state of Arkansas have gotten millions of dollars through this stimulus virus money. How are most of the schools allocating that out?
Well, that's a great question, Mr. Cash. And I certainly don't want to paint with too broad of a brush on how institutions are choosing to use that money. I can tell you unequivocally that at least half of that money, or a little more, has gone toward direct student aid. So institutions were required to make direct payments to their students with 50%, at least 50% of the funds that they received. So that was, that had to be in terms of direct payment. So that was cash assistance to students. We have used a lot of money that came to, to the state that wasn't specifically earmarked for institutions for our COVID mitigation strategies. We've spent millions of dollars on PPE, millions of dollars on our testing protocol, millions of dollars on our contact tracing in our higher education communities. The individual institutions are doing a variety of things. They haven't been able to recruit with that money, which is unfortunate because everyone is expecting another down enrollment semester this fall. So be prepared for that at our next meeting when I give you our, our fall enrollment report. They are, they're doing things on their campuses, they're upgrading facilities, upgrading ventilation, taking care of critical maintenance and things that are directly tied to mitigation strategies for COVID. A lot of scholarshiping is going on, a lot of investment in our workforce programs. I hesitate to give you any specifics because I think that the strategies that are being used are as diverse as the institutions that we have on the call. I could provide you with some summaries, which we're still working on. I do think it's also important that I, that I point out that institutions have a couple of years to spend all this money. So at this point, a lot of our institutions are still planning how they'll spend it. So they're putting their plans in place for, you know, capital investments and more long-term annuships that are going on. So if there's anybody on the call, any of the presidents or chancellors that want to jump in and talk about something great that has happened at your institution as a result of this funding, that would be good, because I don't have more specifics for you, Mr. Cash.
Thank you.
No volunteers.
Any other announcements, any other new business, any other questions? I just want to thank everybody for giving us your time today. We don't call these special meetings just on a whim. Very, very important agenda today, I'm glad we got through it. Thank you all for your hard work. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Our next meeting will be October 29th, 9:00 AM via Zoom. Hearing no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We will be adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.